Good morning. I'm asking you good morning. Good morning. And when you go back to jail, maybe it'll come out. I'm telling you, I said, when you go back to jail, maybe it'll come out. Maybe it'll talk to you. Oh, oh, you just like maybe. That is except, I mean, we talked about where the money was coming from. It would be too late for the money. We talked about where we get the money for white. And where the money is. Who is this? Who is this? Oh, 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 oh.
Good morning. Good work session. We go to ask the vice chair for the thing that the leaders in prayer.
Good morning. Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you that you're still in charge, that you're the great Comforter, the great Provider, that no matter what happens around us, Lord, we know that you're there, and we just need to spend more time focusing on you and asking you for our help. Well, just glad you'd be with our county commission this morning, that all decisions we make this morning will be in the best interest of every citizen in Montgomery County. We do this in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll go over our visitors for today. First, we'll hear from the city-county EMA, then from grants manager Regina Walker, Leslie York from Carp Deck, executive director Chuck Holmes with the Alabama Humanities Alliance, President Darrell Skipper with Skipper Consulting, municipal advisor Sharon Macon with Daylight Capital Advisors, and President Ann Sykes and Ms. Caroline Clark with the Montgomery Education Foundation. First, we will start with Kristi Thornton from EMA.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Montgomery County is still listed as far as COVID as a high-risk area. As of yesterday, they have not updated our numbers this morning. We've had 52,396 positive COVID cases. Of that, 16,805 were from 2020, 23,150 were from 2021, and in the first 31 days of 2022, we've had 12,441 cases. So, that's disheartening for us to see. Totally, we have had 812 deaths from COVID-19. First dose for COVID vaccine, we've had 127,386 people, or 56.24% of our Montgomery County population. Totalling their series of doses one and two, we've had 99,998 people, or 44.15%. A total of 257,647 doses have been administered. Since December 21st, Montgomery EMA has opened our Montgomery Warming Center and our Crisis Center at 3446 LeBron Road. We have housed, in total, 20 days, 437 individuals. We have provided 874 meals. We've had two serious incidents. Six have been trespassed for fighting either each other or the staff. Two of those attacks were physically to the staff, bruises to prove it. We are seeing a lot of people that are having some mental issues. They come into the center. Lady went out the door, just like any school, they automatically lock to prevent serious incidents such as active shooters or people entering and trespassing into the facility. She locked herself out, and when I went to let her in, she attacked me. She proceeded to throw punches. The law enforcement kicked in, and she was escorted out of the facility physically by myself and three females that we have on our staff that work the warming center. So, not that I've had an issue with the county, and I do appreciate Captain Persky stopping by the other day just to check on us, but we've turned into a, we locate people drunk and they drop them off with us. So, we are having to limit that because people are taking, instead of putting someone in jail for public intoxication, they choose to drop them off with us, so we've had to deal with that a little bit as well. This Wednesday, the Alabama House is taking into consideration through the Public Safety and Department of Homeland Security Committee to deem emergency management as public safety. So, we're excited about that, to be considered more than clerical positions, because at no point in time has my staff been clerical. We are out responding, mitigating situations, circumstances, running vaccine clinics, testing clinics, and now, again, for our second year, this warming center because of the 501(c)(3)'s and the volunteer organizations that refuse to do so. So, like I said, 437 people over 20 nights have been in our facility. They are provided a cot, they provided sleeping bags, blankets, new clothing that has been donated by our fabulous community. We've had several community members and churches that have dropped off food, have yet to volunteer. We have received no assistance for mental health. When we have reached out to MOC, to try to get some housing for the people, we're told, well, you fill out the paperwork and send it to us, and we'll get to them within about 30 days. So, we're trying to deal and work through that. Through communications through our staff and working through some of our local businesses, we have gotten two of the individuals' jobs that have come into the warming center. We've also gotten two into a more permanent sheltering environment to help them get their hand up versus a hand out. Any questions? Thank you, y'all. Have a great day.
Thank you, Kristi.
Kristi, Kristi, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to digest what you just said. I mean, they are actually treating that warming center as if it were a mental health facility or as if it were a place where you go get social services.
Or a drunk tank.
And, and, and...
We had an individual that was brought in. He is, has several physical handicaps and obvious mental handicaps that came in drawn.
Who was bringing him in? Police?
Yes, sir. I told her she'd hear it. She said it would happen anymore.
Okay.
But they wake up in the middle of the night and decide they're gonna urinate all over the cot of the people, and so that's a possibility.
You're not equipped for that. We, we, we are hopefully wanting to come up with an alternative to what, to jail and to places like warming centers. We're gonna try to come up with something for people like that, but in the meantime, that should not be happening. There should be other places. That place should be for people who are out in the cold with nowhere to go to warm and get something to eat and have a safe place and not, you shouldn't have to deal with those types of things. But you said the city's aware. The police are aware. Okay, thank you.
Kristi, what are the organizations that would, pre-COVID, typically open up on cold nights?
In the past, we've asked for Red Cross to open a warming center. Beulah off Rosa Parks has opened in the past, and they provide them with tables, coffee, and crackers. They're not doing congregant care.
So, basically, the Red Cross.
And they're out of the warming center business is exactly what we were told.
No, I get that, but before, they were the only game in town was the Red Cross?
We have Salvation Army, who I've tried to call for the last week and a half, and every voicemail is full, and I can't obviously get through. Friendship Missions, they have helped us as far as taking in the people that have helped, but that's it.
Yeah, I just mean, who, who was doing it before?
We would call Red Cross.
The Red Cross. Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Now, we'll go over the items to be considered during the formal session. First is...
Florence.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, interrupting. I'm in. I wanted to let everybody know, and I, first of all, want to thank, first and foremost, all the prayers. I have never been through anything like this, but I'm in the meeting, and I thank you very much for your prayers and consign.
That is Tommy Gallion, the county attorney, for those curious.
Pardon?
Thank you, Tommy.
Kristi would...
Sure, thank you.
Kristi would like to add one more thing.
Also, over the past few weeks, we've had several parents that are dropping off their 19-year-old kids to stay with us. They don't want to have to deal with them. They're refusing to keep them at the house because the kids, and the nicest way to put that, are some of the most entitled, rude individuals I've ever seen in my life, and they're using that as well. They're not wanting their 19-year-olds in the house anymore, so they're kicking them out. We've had them, mothers bring them in and sign them in, dropping them off with us.
Now, we'll look at the items on the agenda. Consider a resolution to engage Stiefel and Liberty Bank and Trust Company as underwriters and Gilpin Givern as bond counsel regarding a bond issue to fund repairs and renovations to the detention facility and other capital projects. Consider a proposed Maxwell Boulevard downtown accessibility study, and during the information session, Darrell Skipper is here and can answer questions about that. Consider two 2022 county employee blood drives. Consider a county employee education assistance program that was discussed last week and modified as you requested.
I'm not sure I understand.
Consider 2022 membership dues in the amount of $175 to Leadership Alabama for Commissioner Rhonda Walker. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Consider a bid award to Osborne Associates for traffic supplies for the engineering. Consider a bid award to preferred cleaning services for sanitizing services for elections. Consider proposed changes to service maintenance worker and equipment operator positions. Consider, excuse me. Consider budget change request number six for engineering. Consider budget change request number one to the Personnel Department. Consider budget change request number three for the probate judge's office. Consider position fill requests for the Appraisal Department for an appraiser three. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for four corrections officer trainees. Consider position fill requests for the District Attorney's Office for a grand jury coordinator and an assistant grand jury coordinator. Consider position fill requests for the youth facility detention for a juvenile detention officer. Consider travel training requests for tax and audit sheriff and the youth facility detention. Judge Love asked to have a few seconds, please, to discuss a position in his office.
Good morning, everyone. I know you all have a long agenda, and I'll be very brief. I just wanted to introduce you all to Christopher Turner, who is now working with my office as Assistant Chief Clerk, and that is the highest merited position we're at the office. Some of the commissioners may remember Christopher. He worked about eight years over as Assistant Director of Election Center, so we're happy to have him on this side of the street. So, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from grants manager Regina Walker.
You have before you a grant to the Firehouse Foundation for us to add some additional AEDs. We're working in conjunction with Parks and Rec Director James Williams to add some to three parks, and then the other two will be added to two sheriff's office facilities. So...
No charge?
No charge. There is no match to this grant. Thank you.
No objection to, we have the waiver rules.
Yes, sir, because it has a very tight window. When it closes, once they receive their maximum number, it closes.
I have no objection to waive the rules, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The personnel that are actually, that may have the opportunity to use these defibrillators, what type of training do they have?
They give them, they, we, they come in and do a school, the company that we purchased from. Everybody gets a certificate, and then they come back and they re-certify them about every year.
And these people within the sheriff's department?
Sheriff.
Okay.
Now, the one, Regina, at the parks, are they gonna be available to, if my family's out there and I have the need for, are they gonna be available?
James, James Williams will have to answer that.
James Williams. Who selected these three sites? They're actually in the buildings, the two buildings that we actually own.
Okay, so they wouldn't be outside?
No, no. And Elton Dean Park will be inside the building.
Okay. So, it would be accessible if I'm at Elton Dean Park with my family on a Sunday afternoon, no county employee there, if I need it, I could have access to it?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And it's pretty self, we have them at the ballpark, they're very self-explan, it talks you through it, actually, when you start it, it'll tell you down 911, do this, this. Really neat stuff, good stuff.
Next, we'll hear from Community Development Manager Leslie York with Carp Deck.
So, I'm here to talk with y'all about the CDBG CV grant that was awarded to the county last year. This grant is $300,000 awarded to the county for coronavirus COVID-related activities. Not sure if y'all remember all the details of the project, but our office has looked into several different agencies who could receive those funds, and at this point, the most recent has been Mercy House. And I believe y'all are familiar with them. They're a great organization from everything I've learned. They recently received the old Corcinos Building on Court Street, and they are looking to update the kitchen facilities so that they can provide hot meals, deliver them out into the county. And with that, they're also interested in a vehicle that could transport those, that maintain health requirements for the, the heat of the food and all. So, because the application was originally awarded for food assistance, if the commission is agreeable and you choose to work with Mercy House, we need to do a formal amendment to the project. That would require a public hearing so that we could move the funds from the food assistance line item in the budget to equipment. We met with people at a DECA last week. Florence and Kendall were there. I think that meeting went really well. Again, they are a really good organization. If y'all have any questions about the project, you know, please feel free to ask, but right now, what we would like is the commission's approval to, at your next meeting, hold a public hearing and provide a resolution and a budget amendment that we can submit to the state for that.
What's the criteria for, for receipt of these funds? I'm wondering if anyone else, any other entity, has had an opportunity to present something before we make that decision? It seems like it should have been the Oprah.
Well, yes, sir. And we've investigated quite a few from Montgomery Area Food Bank, Salvation Army, Restore, Community Action, and the difficulty, I suppose, with these funds is that they must only be spent in the unincorporated county area as well as Town and Pike Road. So, anything that's within the city limits, Montgomery City limits, is not eligible.
Leslie, you and I've had a conversation, and I disagree. Community Action, Community Action got buildings and stuff, and they serve it to the county, unincorporated area. So, I don't see how you're disqualified here. We decided against Salvation Army. Now, I can, Restore is in the city, but Community Action has been servicing outside of the county for 50 years.
Yes, sir, and they have received some funds of their own, and I think that's been part of the whole conversation, is putting these additional CDBG dollars in an area that's needed where they don't have sufficient funding. Community Action, my understanding, has provided utility assistance, rent assistance, you know, to those people out in the county, but, you know, some of the, the food-related issues are still not met at the level they need to be out in the county.
Have been, have been met now.
Well, just other, just from the information that we've gathered, the people who are out in the county who are still seeking assistance. I know Mercy House has mentioned to us that they have been contacted, you know, by a lot of, of different people, and, you know, we do have to be...
Community Action has been servicing depressed, poor minorities for years.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to see who's going to do it. Who's going to do it?
Mr. Chairman, I think the question that we need to get to is not who's worthy, who qualifies?
Yeah.
So, that's the, the ultimate question. Who qualifies? Does Community Action qualify? Does Mercy House qualify?
Yes, ma'am.
Both of them qualify.
I think we have some options at other agencies. We just need a consensus or a majority of the commissioners to decide. I mean, we are kind of at a position now where we've got to make a decision, or the state's gonna ask... state's going to ask for the money back, because it must be spent by like March of '23.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with Mercy House. I've heard the arguments, pro and con, for Salvation Army, the Food Bank, Community Action, and Mercy House. Time's running out. We don't want to give this money back. We do need some service in the county. Mercy House qualifies. I don't have any objection to us doing what we need to do to modify our application so that Mercy House can do what they need to do to get food to the, hot meals to the county.
But the question, yeah, the question still, Mr. Harris, we certainly, I don't think anybody was in disagreement that Mercy House has done a wonderful job serving the community. We want to know the criteria, but I do, about, you know, which they, you know, select the people and who's actually eligible, and I think we need to have more discussion about that. We just can't have them deciding.
But who's eligible for what, though?
For this grant, to carry out the provisions of this grant. I don't, I hadn't seen the grant. I don't know what it entails.
I was, I was in the same position that you're in, and it was explained to me, and my understanding is that it's, the money is for food to be served to people outside of the city limits. And that's not a whole lot of organizations that are providing meals in Montgomery County. Salvation Army is mainly in the city. The Food Bank?
Oh, yeah, the Salvation, well, Salvation Army, who got it last year?
Yeah, this is new money. This is not, it's COVID money.
And we've been talking about this grant for quite some time, many months, a year, perhaps. So, this isn't new. This is a conversation we've been having for almost a year, which is why it's been difficult to identify organizations that we would support, that would qualify and pass, you know, because this is just us making a recommendation, and ultimately, the state decides if they meet the criteria.
Well, we would not request one or recommend one to the state if they didn't meet that.
And so, based on your conversation with a DECA, you have a feel for what does and does not qualify?
Yes.
And Mercy House does qualify. Some of the others you do not feel would be accepted.
Right. And originally, some of the conversations we had with Mercy House, they were not in a position that they're in now, that they've gotten the new facility on Court Street that they want to serve from. So, that, again, kind of opened that door. And honestly, purchasing equipment is going to go quicker, I think, than if we tried to backtrack, you know, a year ago to what we were planning to do, because, again, we've spent a lot of time talking about different agencies or organizations. And, you know, again, Mercy House will go outside into the county. The beneficiaries have to either be senior citizens or meet low and moderate income requirements to be served.
We are wasting our time, all of us agree with Mercy House. And when you talk about location, this is the heart of Montgomery, Seattle, Montgomery. So, when the courses start coming up, how do they qualify? I just hope that we can explain it.
Yes, sir.
Community Action do the same thing.
You have the criteria for this grant at your office? I'd like to look at it.
Yes, sir, I can.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, part of it is, it's kind of loosely structured. The state was trying to give entities or, you know, municipalities some flexibility, but does have to be COVID-related.
Come by and look at the criteria.
Okay. So, again, you know, like I said, today, what we would like is permission from y'all to put on your next agenda a public hearing to get any additional input, you know, on the commission's decision, as well as amending the budget to move the funds to equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do that for the next meeting.
I second it.
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Executive Director Chuck Holmes with the Alabama Humanities Alliance.
Commissioners, thank you for making time for me today. Before you, is an invitation from the Alabama Humanities Alliance and Regions Bank to join us in a celebration at the end of this month at the Alabama Colloquium, which is an annual event that we operate. We are going to honor the Equal Justice Initiative's Bryan Stevenson and the late Representative John Lewis as Alabama Humanities Fellows for 2022. This is an annual event that my nonprofit runs. It hasn't happened since 2019 because of the pandemic. All previous Alabama colloquia have been held in Birmingham. This is the first time we're bringing it to Montgomery, and we're really proud to be doing that. It is also a fundraiser for my nonprofit, and we use those funds for the public programs that we run throughout the state. And in front of you is a list of many of those activities that happen in Montgomery County, including a statewide competition, Alabama History Day, that happens in Montgomery, the Alabama Book Festival, which we operate, which sadly has been on hiatus because of the pandemic, and Stony the Road We Trod, which is a federally funded workshop for public school teachers who come from around the country to learn about the civil rights history of Alabama. We are federally funded in part. We give out grants in federal funds, and you'll see a list of those funds over the past three years. We've contributed about $150,000 to cultural institutions in Montgomery County. The event itself happens February 28th at the Renaissance Hotel, and we've already sold over 300 tickets and still have a few weeks to go, so we're very pleased at the response we've gotten. Past Alabama Humanities Fellows include Harper Lee, Fred Gray, Judge Myron Thompson, Senator Shelby, Senator Heflin, an array of Alabamians who've distinguished themselves in the humanities or whose support for the humanities have been instrumental in helping make the state smarter and better. I would be happy to take any questions you might have and hope you'll join us in the event and be there for lunch on February 28th.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, welcome to Montgomery.
Thank you.
I hope this isn't, this may be your first, but I hope this isn't your last time. I'm excited, I hope I'm able to attend. I'm excited about the event. And what's your ask on this?
Twenty, $25,000 is the presenting sponsorship level that we're seeking. I run a nonprofit. I'm happy for anything, but that's the, that's the level that we're, we've requested for a kind of title sponsorship and...
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to recommend that we, we support this, this event by donating the $25,000 sponsorship for it. This is the type of event that I think Montgomery want to be known for, instead of having this thing happen in Birmingham. Let's, let's try to have this thing happen in Montgomery every year.
The book fair, the writers' fair, is that at Old Alabama Town? That's you guys that do that?
It is.
That is one of the best events in the state of Alabama every year. I didn't know that was you guys. That's one of my favorite things in the world.
We actually, it was run by a group of volunteers from Montgomery. My organization took it over in 2018.
Okay.
As the fiscal agent, and then formally took it over in 2019.
Good.
Sadly, pandemic. We hired a consultant last year to help us kind of figure out how to relaunch it, and we're hoping to do that hopefully next year, raise some money and launch it in an even bigger and better way.
Well, please reach out to me and let me know what your plans are and how I can help. We want to keep that event in Montgomery, and we want to keep it strong. It's amazing, the authors that are there and that you have access to, and it's a, it's a great event.
It's a great way to distinguish not only Montgomery but the state. And I think dispels some, maybe some national images people have of Alabama. We have amazing writers here, a rich literary tradition, and that festival really celebrates it every year.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I concur with Commissioner Harris. I support this request.
I see on your list here, a lot of these on your list come to us for funding.
Yes, sir.
But Bryan Stevenson, of course, has done so much here in Montgomery, so I look forward to the event.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
So, him and Fred Gray both are co-honorees?
Fred Gray was an honoree in 2017, I believe. He's a past honoree. Bryan Stevenson will be the honoree. John Lewis, his family from Troy and from Atlanta will be there to sort of accept on his behalf.
Oh, good.
The, one of, one of the hosts from National Public Radio, Michelle Martin, will come down. She will interview, she'll have a conversation on stage with Bryan about his work. Should be a great event.
It will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want to identify a source for funding at this time?
Donate to join you.
Joke designated?
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Darrell Skipper with Skipper Consulting to talk about the proposed Maxwell Downtown Access Study.
My name is Darrell Skipper. My distinct pleasure to be with you today. If I haven't worked personally with each of you in the past, we look forward to it in the future and your staff. I represent Skipper Consulting, and we're the firm that's been selected to do this accessibility study for the downtown Montgomery area and Maxwell Air Force Base. If you are coming or going to Maxwell Air Force Base from the north, south, or east, let's see how we put it, I would say that accessibility is a little clumsy at best. Sometimes the same thing, since the downtown Montgomery from the 65 Quarter and Maxwell share that for accessibility, it's a little clumsy, too. And I know when, we did a lot of work with the BRAC commands in Huntsville at Redstone Arsenal. One of the things they're looking for when they're wanting to locate a new business, someone's wanting to locate a new corporate headquarters downtown Montgomery, or a command to Maxwell, one of the things they do look is, how do I get my people to and from? And accessibility is one of those. So, what's important for downtown Montgomery is important for Maxwell, which is important for the whole River, River region, and appreciate your consideration of this. Our firm has a major subcontractor, a subcontractor on our firm, Volkert and Associates. Volkert has been around for a lot of years. Volkert is one of the premier highway design firms in the southeast, and they partnered up with us to provide that. We will be providing the guidance, the coordination, the interface with all of the stakeholders that are going to be involved, as well as the traffic analysis. They'll be doing the real, the conceptual design and costing for us. What the, we're going to be forming a focus group. Focus group are going to be made up of folks that represent the base, city Montgomery, of course, Montgomery County, Federal Highway Administration, and the Alabama Department of Transportation, since we're all involved, all of those are involved in this and anything that happens with the interstate system. Now, a lot of people have suggested a lot of things that could be done to improve accessibility to downtown in Maxwell. We understand that, and we're going to keep that overhead in a little, little room by itself right now, but what we're going to try to do is find out what the true needs of the downtown area in Maxwell are. What are the deficiencies on the interstate system now that we need to address in approaching and developing something that improves mobility in the area, accessibility in the area? The, just to make sure you understand the, we're going to be developing up to at least four different alternatives for testing and for vetting through the community and through our steering committee. And want to make sure that everybody understands what we're trying to do is certainly reduce congestion, you know? Driving in this morning on 65 southbound, it was not the traffic that was wanting to get off to go to Maxwell, to get off to go to downtown. It was the proximity of the River Bridge to the route interchange at I-85 that was causing congestion, and one affects the other. So, you've got to look at those type, type things. We want to certainly improve the system's performance that's out there. Anything we want to do, let's make sure that it supports economic development, and it's done environmentally as sensitive as we can. I must say, the interstate system, when it was put through Alabama in the 50s and early 60s, it didn't quite have that thrust in looking at where it went. It used the hammer approach or sledgehammer approach, and certainly, we need to be doing a better job in that. I think if you were planning I-85 right now, where would you put it? You would probably put it south of Montgomery. Mobile struggles with where the interstate system is located. Birmingham struggles with where there is. You struggle where yours is. The only city, major city in Alabama that doesn't struggle with it is Huntsville, because when they planned the interstate system, it was not large enough to have the interstate go through towns that went halfway between Decatur and Huntsville. Therefore, Huntsville has got interstate spurs that lead to them instead of a major regional route that goes right through the heart of it. Your route is serving, is, 85 and 65 are serving a dual purpose. It's the through routes to and from the coast, areas to the north, 85 to Atlanta, and it's all the local traffic that wants to get to and from where they work, where they live, where they play. So, it's serving, Birmingham's the same thing. We're doing a study on 65 north right now for the Department of Transportation. And certainly, what, the product we'll end up with will be a preferred alternative. There'll be an engineering drawing, which is taking about 30%. We'll do an environmental screening, and we'll develop a cost for that. Now, that's not a set of construction documents that gets you going, but it tells you what needs to be done. It's vetted through the community, what the cost is going to be, and outlines a plan for how you get to the next step or get to the end, where you can see some real construction. I went through it real fast. We're looking for this process to take anywhere from seven to nine months. It's not something you enter into quickly, but it's, we've had the interstate system since early 60s, I believe, when they built I-85. Early 60s is when those bridges are, before, when they went into construction. So, any questions you might have, be glad to answer them. Look forward to working with your staff and with you down the road as we bring things back, as we progress along it, and keep you updated on what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the gentleman for coming in, but I was hoping for a little sketch or something to kind of help me understand what the proposed project entails in terms of how we trying to get traffic routed or get it back out of Maxwell into Maxwell. And so, I was just hoping that you would, you would have brought us a little moth up or something to help explain what you just talked about.
I don't, I don't have a solution yet, because I mentioned to you, putting that, anything, ideas people had over in the room. First thing we're going to do is try to identify what the real problems are out there. What does Maxwell need? What does downtown need? What are the current deficiencies? And then we'll apply some solutions to that. The area, right now, if you're coming from the south and you want to get to, let's say you're coming from I-85, or you're coming from the south on I-65, you want to get to Maxwell, the only way you can get there is to get off at Clayherr and go down Maxwell Boulevard. That's cumbersome right there to do that. You just can't, you can't return. Day Street Gate is not open. The Kelly Street Gate is open, which is supposed to be for commercial vehicle inspections, but they're doing it dual purpose, and a lot of people are using it, which causes a backup out there on 31 that doesn't need to be there. So, everybody's going to the Maxwell Gate that they've got right now. They've only got a couple of guard stations there, and it backs traffic up, and it's difficult to get in.
So, and just to clarify, we, we want to participate in the hiring of this firm, Skipper, to actually study the issue. So, the ideas aren't out there yet. There's nothing to put on paper. There's no, there's no graphic for us to look at until seven to nine months down the road. Once this is thoroughly studied and better understood, then there will be some renderings and ideas.
We will be coming back. We'll be coming back to you for progress reports as we make progress, as we define the problems and the issues. We've got the technology now to determine anybody on, that's coming south on 65, going west on, it's south, really south on I-85, but it's from the east on 85, from 31 north, from 65 south. We can determine how they're getting to Maxwell.
Right.
And how they're getting back from Maxwell. How long it takes them? How long is that travel time? That, that sort of thing. And also, from the surface street system, we can tell who's getting there from the surface street system, also from the northern bypass, how many are getting from there. We can determine all of that, figure out the routes people are taking so that we know. One of the basic questions we need probably answer, do they need to reopen the Day Street Gate? You know? I grew up in Montgomery, and Day Street Gate's always been open.
Was the main one?
It was the main gate.
It was the main gate. You're right.
I, I, I understand the project and support the project. My, 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 my problem with the project really was, I understand the importance of Maxwell and making sure that they can, we can get in and out of Maxwell. But that, my problem, I was around when they, when they blasted through Montgomery with I-65 and I-85. I was here. And I saw the devastation that it did to certain business communities, and the lack of exits, and the lack of access to certain areas of the city. So my hope is that this study comes up with better access to West Montgomery and to those exits on I-65 between the River Bridge and the South Boulevard or thirty-one south. I want, I'd like to see the study include all of that. Maxwell's important. I understand that, and I understand the need to have that done. But there are other aspects in terms of economic development that needs to be looked at, and now hopefully that we can get some of that out of this study. Access to downtown, great, but access to other business areas on the west side in particular, and in that I-65 corridor.
Yeah, I agree. That's, that's what we've discussed. We're missing out on, on pulling that traffic from sixty-five onto these exits in Montgomery. They stop in Prattville, and they stop in Greenville or Fort Deposit. We, we want to get those folks. So I agree, that's an important piece of it for us.
Will you be looking at all of that, sir, that Commissioner Walker?
We will certainly be working with the chamber in making sure that we're looking at the correct study area. That's, that meets the county's needs, the city's needs, and the base's needs.
Because it's one thing for us to see what we want, and it's a total different thing that you might be studying. So I was just wondering if all of that would be incorporated into the study.
I don't have a problem studying down to at least south of Fairview, because there's a fairly good gap there between the back of Carver, that partial interchange there, and the bypass. I don't think it would be that difficult to extend what we're planning to do that far.
So that, that chamber's here, that's important to us, that that be included in part of the scope, Sharon. That's important to the county commission, that the entire corridor from the Boulevard to Clayherron be included in the scope of the study.
And there's also actually, well, that Southern Boulevard.
Yes, yes, that entire corridor. Thank you.
By the way, I'm a consultant. We will study the entire city.
You'll, you'll, you'll do what we ought to. I know, I get that. We appreciate it. We just wanted it to be crystal clear.
Some matter of resources that everyone has to bring to the table.
Sure.
You have to be kin to Randy Skipper.
Yes, sir.
That's your brother?
That's one of my younger brother. Yes, sir. I grew up in Montgomery. My mom worked at Maxwell her entire career. She worked at Deere College. And my daddy was a road builder. That's how I got interested in roads and transportation. Unfortunately, I didn't stay in Montgomery. I actually worked for the city of Montgomery for a number of years before I left and went to Huntsville, and then back to Birmingham.
I know Ronald and Randy were good guys.
Well, thank you. I might have been the only bad seed in the bunch.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Look forward to working with you, your staff, down the road.
Thank you.
And his brother ran the ballpark at East Montgomery for a little bit.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Next we'll hear from municipal advisor Sharon Macon with Daylight Capital Advisors.
Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are we doing? Thank you all for your time. First, I want to give an honor to God. My name is Sharon Macon, and these are my colleagues. This is Samuel Sarpong, and our VP Larry Day. And we are federally registered municipal advisors with Daylight Capital Advisors out of Jackson, Mississippi. And we're here to ask the board to be added to the municipal bonds transaction that we are about to undergo with Stiefel pertaining to the renovations to the detention centers. And as your municipal advisor, we will assume the role as fiduciary, ensuring that the county has the appropriate representation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to ask a question. And, and so by bringing you all on, what is it that you all add to what we currently have or don't have? I mean, what is the, the role that, that you all bring to the table, and how, what have we been missing in the past? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Thank you, Commissioner, but yes, we can answer that question certainly. I just want to state first that we're looking to play the role as municipal advisor, financial advisor, to work alongside with the additional group of professionals that you all will take under consideration to hire in the transaction, the underwriters, Stiefel, and Liberty Bank. But we want to pose, or we want to work as, on the team as the financial advisor. And that role consists of someone that's working on behalf directly with the commission on the transaction. So we're not trying to kick anybody out. We just want to make sure that, that the commission has a fiduciary on the transaction. We, we've worked with numerous underwriters in this capacity, and it's quite normal. If you look at these deals across the country, ninety percent of the deals have municipal advisors or financial advisors on the transaction. Now, I know traditionally you all have not used a financial advisor or municipal advisor in that capacity, but we're just here to, to provide you with information, and we recommend certainly that you give that some consideration.
What, what are the advantages? What type of information? I mean, we, we, we've done this, I've been on the commission now nine years, and we've never used an advisor. What have we been missing? What is it that you're going to add to the process?
Well, let me answer in this, in this fashion. I use this analogy. In the court system, you're certainly allowed to represent yourself in a, in a case. But you always, and it's recommended, to have you legal counsel in, in a court matter. Not to say you can't do it, that's just the recommended way. And it's the same thing with these transactions. You can do them by yourself, obviously, but it's recommended that you have someone that's working with you directly, negotiating the transaction on your behalf, along with the underwriters on the transactions. I just want to mention this. It's, if you look at the, the deal that you're doing, it's called a negotiated deal. So I posed the question, who's negotiating the transaction from the county's perspective? And when you don't have a financial advisor, you don't have anybody negotiating from your side. Not to say that the underwriters would do anything wrong, not saying that. I'm just saying you don't have representation.
In other words, when, when, when an underwriter come to us with a deal, you would be the one to look at it and tell us whether or not it's a good deal?
Yeah, we.
Whether or not there's a better way to do it, or?
Absolutely. We, we're responsible. We're obligated as municipal advisors to work in that capacity on your behalf as your fiduciary, to make sure that whatever's brought to the table, that we can say we feel comfortable with the transaction, and you all will have that liability on the transaction, on the deal.
How, how are you paid?
We're paid off a commission, just like everybody else on the transaction. We usually charge anywhere, somewhere under two dollars per bond on the transaction. But we get paid the same way that the attorneys and the underwriters and the credit rating agencies and whoever else is a part of the transaction.
In other words, the, 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 the underwriters, the people that come to us with these deals, they don't owe us a fiduciary duty, do they?
No, and they don't. And I just want to be clear. They, they still do a good job, but they will, and if you ask them that particular question, they would tell you, no, they don't owe you a fiduciary.
I know. They give us disclosure. They let us know. They're working for themselves, not us.
They have to do that. That's a form that they have to let you know.
And I'm just, you know, you're asking us to do something that we've never done before. You know, we want to get a real good understanding, you know, of what, what is it you're going to help us with?
Well, and also let me say this. If you just look around the state on these transactions, the last transaction that the city of Montgomery did, they had a municipal advisor. The last transaction that, if you go north and go to Birmingham, there was a municipal advisor on that transaction. Jefferson County, the airport, this is not uncommon. And, and if you want to get into the specifics of what we do, our main goal is to make sure that the structure is done properly. We work with you on all aspects when you decide to provide informations to the attorneys when they do the official statement, where we're looking at those documents, making sure that they're accurate and right when they're submitted. We have an obligation to do that. Also, we work with the credit rating agencies. The county wants to make sure that they get the best credit rating, similar to a credit report. They want to make sure they have the best bond rating on the transaction, and we help to facilitate that, facilitate that process along with the underwriters.
Who's done that for us in the past?
Um, back in, I don't know, twenty seventeen sometime, you all engaged Phil Dots out of Huntsville, I believe. I can't remember the name of his firm.
I think it's PFM. I'm familiar with them. So this is not something that you all have not done in the past. You just haven't done it recently.
I see.
The commissions that y'all pay, does that come, is that an additional commission that we would end up having to pay out of our bond receipts? Or y'all share that commission with the bond underwriter?
No, it would be illegal for us to share that commission. That would be, that we would jeopardize our license if we do that. That, this is an additional fee that would be added to the transaction. But the services that we're providing, you need those services on the transaction.
So y'all are not, y'all are not investment bankers?
No, we're not. We're not investment bankers. We're not the underwriters. We work with them. We're part of the team.
Have you got any examples of how y'all have been able to help and save municipalities money by doing?
Absolutely. We just, in Green County, Water Authority, they did a revenue bond. We were able to save them, what was that amount?
Four hundred thousand dollars.
They did a refinancing, and we helped them lower their rate. We were able to save them that amount of money just by being the financial advisor on the transaction, working along with everybody else. We do a lot of what we call new money deals. We just worked on a deal in Union Springs, Alabama. They, what was the dollar amount on that?
About one point eight million dollars.
One point eight million. It was a smaller deal, and we helped them get the financing on that. So we're active. We also closed a deal last year in Aliceville, Alabama. So we're active across the state. We're out of Mississippi, but we're spreading our wings, and we want to do business in the state of Alabama.
I'm not an investment banker, but if I was an investment banker, I would, I would ask you, I said, well, I've been doing all these for the county for years and years. What, what value you going to bring? I do all this already. I make sure the county gets the best rating. I make sure the county gets the best deal. I do all this already. What are you going to do different? Because I know investment bankers don't want you doing this.
Well, hold on. That's, that's a great point, but I don't necessarily think that that is the case. If you would ask them that, they would probably say, we don't want that liability, because that's not what we do. That's not a part of the transaction that we're involved in. Let's put that on someone else. I don't necessarily think that it's just a clear-cut case that the underwriters would say that we're not needed on the transaction. I would welcome that you all ask the underwriters if they feel if we're not needed.
I have asked.
And what did they say?
They said, they feel like you're not needed.
Interesting.
I did, I did my homework and checked before, just to make sure. That don't mean it's a dead deal. I'm just saying, that's what their perspective is, or was.
You know, that, that bothers me, Doug, that, that they would say that, because, because they, they don't owe us a financial, they don't owe us a fiduciary duty.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just.
I mean, they, they, they come in here with a deal, and we have to take their word for it. We, they said, this is the best deal, and, and we've done this, and we've done that, and we have to take their word for it, and then turn, tell us, well, but we're not, we don't owe you that duty. What they're saying is, if they're in the game, we got somebody that who actually owe us that duty to make sure that what we're looking at is the best that we can do, including the rates and all the other stuff. So that, it bothers me that anybody in a transaction would advise us against getting representation in that transaction. That bothers them for me.
And I'll say, it's not them that's on the agenda for today. It's who I talked to. I did not talk to them.
And, and we, in two thousand and ten, is when they started regulating our industry. So some of the old guards are still trying to understand.
And this is the old guard.
I, I understand that. And, and I just want to say, just because you've done it one way in the past does not mean you should look to improve the way you do things in the future.
Yeah, and it interests me to see the savings that you've been able to provide. That's, that's what, you know, we don't, we don't really need another layer to all these, but you got something that you're bringing that's cutting and saving us. I'm, I'm very interested in that.
We want to negotiate those interest rates like it's nobody's business. And that's, that's where, that's where we, that's where we cut our teeth and earn what we do. When the underwriters present us, present the county with the interest rate, it's our job to question that and make sure that the county gets the best deal.
Now, my, my feeling today is, we're, you're probably a little late on this one today, that we're doing today. Maybe going forward, I would be very, very open, but we're in a, a little crunch on, we need to get this one done that we're looking at now because of the issues we're having now currently.
Right, and we wouldn't slow, we wouldn't, and I hear what you're saying, and I understand, but we wouldn't slow down the transaction. As a matter of fact, having more eyes on the transaction could potentially move the transaction forward faster. So that's just something to think about.
Mr. Chairman, I, which, I don't really think they're too late. I mean, I know we've been wanting to get this project done for a long time, but there are a lot of i's that need to be dotted and t's that need to be crossed, so it's not like we're going to go to the market tomorrow. And so I would, I would ask the commission to give these gentlemen an opportunity, sit down with them, and see exactly what it is that they can do to perhaps save money on this transaction that we're entertaining. And also, I'm just wondering, is there a government, governmental body that provides oversight for what you all are do, doing, and what do they recommend?
That's a great question, Commissioner. And you all's packet, through the hard work of Ms. Florence, thank you, Ms. Florence, we have got it out to you all. You will see that the GFOA recommends using financial advisors, municipal advisors, on all municipal bond transactions. And also, there's information included in those packets that are going to outline the very distinct and different roles that we play on the transaction that bring value and complete you all's financial team. And so definitely, the GFOA does recommend financial advisors.
Now, you had mentioned two dollars on, tell me that again, on your fee.
So it's two dollars per bond? So a bond is a thousand dollars. A minimum is twenty-five thousand, and that's certainly less than what the, with anybody else probably on the transaction, attorneys, the underwriters, we, we make less on the transaction than all of them. But we feel like we're just as valuable to the transaction as what they do. And to also add, and we won't prolong this, but we're, we just can't just come up here and represent that we can do this work. We have to pass, we're regulated by the MSRB. We have to pass a stringent exam, the Series Fifty, that says that we're qualified to be able to stand before you and represent you as a municipal advisor.
Make sure my math is correct. On a thirty-seven million dollar bond, your fee would be about seventy-four thousand dollars. Does that sound right?
That sounds right. And then I just want to mention that, and I mentioned it would be less than, than two dollars, so we can negotiate that fee in any form or fashion, but that's what we would, would start off with. But we just want to make sure that we can come in and offer a good service to the county, and ultimately you all decide what you're willing to pay us.
I got to ask this. Would y'all be willing to work on this one?
Yes.
Without charge?
No, sir.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be willing to ask them. I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask. I wouldn't ask you.
They didn't say they were a nonprofit.
I, I wouldn't ask you to do that.
Okay, no doubt.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to, I think we ought to try them on this and see how this works. This is, this is recommended as, as, as best practice to have somebody like this on the deal. If we were less sophisticated, and I'm giving us a lot of credit here, if we were less sophisticated commissioned, we'd definitely have somebody like this doing this for us. But even at our level of sophistication and our trust that we have in the underwriters that we've used for years, I think that this is an opportunity for us to try something new and to see what, what the result is. And seventy-four thousand dollars is not a whole lot of money when you're talking about a forty million dollar deal. It's peanuts. We pay, we pay some lawyers who just sit around and look. They get more than that, that you could really send it and run out of the room.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Mr. Chairman, I feel, you know, this, this, this current deal that is on today's agenda due to extraordinary circumstances has been delayed, 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 delayed. We need to move forward. I feel we need to move forward with it today. Meanwhile, we could get, I, I would like to get more information specifically on paper about your successes. You mentioned, you know, we asked about the, the savings that you've been able to provide or the help that you've been able to provide. I would like some more detail on that. You mentioned refinancing, but groups always get money back with refinancing. So I'd like some specifics to consider for the next time we do such a deal.
I have one more question. Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, sir.
Do you all have any, not oversight, but do you get involved in any way in making sure that the underwriters are giving us the best price as well?
Yeah, that, that's.
That's what you do. Okay, okay.
That's what we do. I mean, that's, that's part of it, because they're going to the markets, bringing back a interest rate. And we're just questioning, trying to get the negotiating on your behalf. I don't think you've had anybody negotiating on your behalf recently on trying to get the best deal for those transactions. That's all, that's all we do.
Mr. Chairman, one last comment, and I would really, really strongly recommend that this commission, uh, give these professionals an opportunity on this particular transaction. We can certainly vote today on that, of course we will. And, but I don't think that hinders them from being a part of the transaction.
Well, you can't go into the day you have to waive, waive rules on, on that. And I, let me just say.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I had a conversation last night about this, this very deal. And we had nobody that could do this in Montgomery. Like I said, he in Jackson, Mississippi. So, uh, they just go out and make me a promise and they gonna move to Montgomery.
Well, you've been in Auburn, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We, we, we can get closer.
There are people in Montgomery that do this.
Really? Okay, well, I'm gonna concur with the, my other two commissioners. How we get there, uh, like I said, we have to waive rules. You know, waive rules, you can be on the next agenda. So, but, but we moving forward with the deal. That we've helped for long, for so long.
So you're saying you're not against?
Oh, no.
Bringing these people?
But just to clarify, there are people locally that do this. If, you know, I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't, but just clarifying that we do have local companies that do this.
There's, there's other stuff at play here, but I don't think, I, I don't think, I think we can get this done without delaying this deal. You know, I'm the one who, who, who delayed it before and I don't intend to do that again. Uh, and I don't think it will if we put them on the team. Uh, and we can do that today and, 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 and keep moving and get it on through.
So does that need to be in the form of a motion commit? In terms of bringing these gentlemen on as a waived rule item?
Yeah.
I'm dependent on your legal skills to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move. I, 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 I move that, uh, that we add, uh, this, uh, team to our, uh, to the transaction that we don't, that we consider.
At what fee are we adding them? We need to have that in the.
Your fee is regulated?
We are regulated. So we make sure.
So you, you, it's, what, it's two dollars, two dollars a share?
That's negotiable.
Which is negotiable. Two dollars, that's what, that's what we start, which is negotiable, like Commissioner Singh just said.
Seventy-four thousand dollars is nothing compared to what, you know, you know, we, we paying three or four lawyers more than that and they're not doing nothing. They don't owe nobody nothing, you know? So I, I mean, I, 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 I don't. Man, I, I wouldn't ask them, I wouldn't ask them to do it for free and I wouldn't ask them to reduce their fee to do it. I mean, let's pay them, pay them what their fee is and, and put them on the team and let's just see how it works.
Is there a motion on the floor? Will you please restate the motion?
Well, I move that the financial advisors be added to this, the, the transaction that's on the agenda to, uh, the bond issue, uh, that we, that's on the agenda for vote today.
I'll second that.
If we waive, waive rules and, and add them.
I'll second that.
You heard the last one, you heard the second. All of the things, let me know my way to you right then.
They have to be unanimous to raise, to waive rules.
Yeah, I don't agree with adding them.
So it takes three votes to move the other thing too.
Yes, it does.
But my fee, the, my, my estimate was accurate, very, right, correct.
And just to clarify, does this have to be done today? If we move forward with the issue that's actually on the agenda, that we've tried to vote on for a couple of months now, if we approve that today, can we still add this team later in the process?
Could we add them next two weeks from now, right? We could add them two weeks.
There is no need to rush today to add, and, and I find it ironic, and this has nothing to do with y'all's skills, knowledge, skills or abilities, uh, but as much as this body rants and raves about hiring out of town or out of state entities and now suddenly we have an out of state entity when we have in-state entities, this is a new issue. Although we've done it before, it's not a regular occurrence when we do these. I think this is all just kind of fast. So it doesn't need to be done today. This is something that we can, you're telling me this is something we could consider at a future meeting, even if we go ahead and approve the item on the agenda today? And we've got an attorney on the phone still, I assume.
Well, I don't think we need the attorney to make this.
Not this, that, that's not a legal question. That's right. I mean, they could, they could sell the bonds, they could sell the bonds. Now, the, the bonds could be sold by the time we have another meeting.
It usually doesn't happen that quickly.
But it could.
It could, but.
And, 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 and with, and in that regard, what we, the, the other, the other thing, the other, other thing that's not being said is that we're trying to add some diversity to these bond issues. That's, that's the, that's the thing that we're not talking about, that don't nobody want to talk about. We're dealing with, with.
We always have diversity on every single bond issue.
More diversity.
Okay, then say more diversity, because we have diversity on every single bond issue since I've been on this body. We do not need to rush, rush and waive rules on a financial matter. This is not good stewardship. This is not good practice. I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm saying I want more information. This is not the way we need to conduct business.
If we're holding on you all to be a part of this year, two weeks from now, is that too late?
That is not too late, but I, I just want to say this, that if they start working on the transaction, we need to be working alongside of them so we can earn what we say we're gonna do on the transaction. So they'll just have a two week head start working.
Well, they've actually been working for, we've been working on this thing for months.
So, so I, and I agree, two weeks is, is not a problem for us. I'm just stating that, uh, I would like to get, if, if we're going to have a fiduciary on the transaction, I would like to get started as soon as possible to make sure we're, we're earning our keep.
Understood.
So the motion failed by four one, waive rule, so you put on the next agenda.
Put on the next agenda. That gives us all time to do a lot.
Absolutely.
So you can give us some information that's even requested?
We certainly will. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next we'll hear from Ann Sykes and Caroline Clark with the Montgomery Education Foundation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Jackie Bredel. Um, I'm the Director of Academic Strategies at Montgomery Education Foundation. Um, I'm a former teacher, a former school leader, um, and a Montgomery parent as well. So, um, this work that we do really hits close to, to my heart. We wanted to thank you. Uh, we wouldn't be able to run our programming without the support of the County Commission and wanted to bring back and just sort of report out, um, to y'all about the different impact and successes that we've seen and then also talk about what our, our hopes and plans are in service of our Montgomery kids, uh, moving forward in the near future. So in the last year, uh, we operated two programs, uh, one called MGM Reads and one called MGM Leaps. And we'll just sort of, um, run through those in front of y'all. You have a two-page document. Both of them are a one-pager. Kind of took the liberty of making a one-pager back in, front and back. But that just sort of give the highlights of, of each of the programs as well and their impact. So just to start out with our MGM Reads program, um, and y'all have been really great supporters the last couple of years. Uh, but the mission is to really grow, um, age-appropriate at-home libraries for underserved children, um, in Montgomery by distributing books and also reading resources, um, for families and kids. In just a, kind of a, uh, interesting piece in front of you, the two pictures here on the bottom left is actually, um, a picture of Montgomery, uh, Montgomery County and city limits in terms of what is sort of coined as a book desert. And you can see we use this information often to really target, um, the areas that are the darkest and deepest red are the areas where our children have the least amount of resources, um, and especially books and literacy resources in their, in their homes. On to the right is just, there's this really large, um, research study that actually tells us that one of the greatest predictors of school success, um, independent of, of family and parent, um, education, income, and social status is actually the number of books inside a child's home. So this past summer, we were able to distribute over six thousand books, um, to our children here in Montgomery. Uh, that's over five hundred children that were served and, um, specifically nine summer learning sites, two, um, of which are in, um, the, uh, Montgomery County area as well. In addition to, um, a number of our YMCA's, Greater Washington Baptist Church, um, and two of our Leaps programs as well. Um, in addition, we've really, we've partnered with, uh, Kelly Realty in supporting their four free little libraries. That's a picture there of students at Highland Gardens Elementary, um, after our book restock. The book restock was out two minutes after we were able to put the books in. Um, we've also provided, uh, weekly onsite reading reports to activities, um, and activities at the Montgomery County Activity Center last summer and the Flatwood Community Center. Um, and really worked to build the capacity of the staff down there too, um, about supporting, uh, student reading and literacy over the summer. MGM Leaps, um, is our summer program. It's a full-day summer program modeled on the structure of the Brain Forest that I think y'all know fairly well. Um, we sort of shifted a little bit of our focus due to what we were seeing and learning, um, with sort of the effects of the COVID pandemic, uh, which we're still living in. So we actually, um, expanded our service area to rising first through rising sixth graders. Brain Forest, uh, primarily served the upper elementary. Um, and we also really put a focus on supporting local teacher pipelines and retention. So we partnered with local schools of education and we actually employ pre-service teachers to lead the classrooms. Um, and it's the only opportunity they get to actually, um, work on things like their classroom management, their instructional strategies and delivery, um, before, you know, they, they start working in, in one of our schools and serving our students. Um, we've also are trying to support, um, aspiring teacher coaches by providing professional development for teachers who, you know, have mastered their craft, um, but are looking for additional ways to, we want them to stay in the classroom. We want them to service our kids. Um, so we've, we provide training for teacher coaches. So they learn how to really coach and mentor these pre-service teachers and expand their own teacher leadership abilities. We've seen, we saw incredibly strong results from last summer's pilot program. Students gained over two and a half months in reading and that's over a six-week period of time. And two months in math, which is actually an accelerated, um, learning path. So we were pretty excited about that. Um, students, families and, and staff were also, um, we saw a lot of high rates of satisfaction. Um, in terms of next steps, our plans this summer anticipated service, um, we're really looking to continue our MGM Read service and even expand. So we constantly receive feedback and provide new iterations as to what would be the most impactful for kids and families, um, especially in terms of what, what, what can help them the most at home. Um, we're also going to be hosting our MGM Leaps programs on the campuses of Faulkner University and Alabama State University, which, you know, will give a lot of, especially a lot of extra resources to supporting our pre-service teachers. Um, we're excited about, we're talking to Mr. Williams about, um, reserving a number of seats at our Leaps program this summer for kids who are down in the county summer sites, um, to be able to give them the opportunity to be transported to and from each day. But it's a five-week full-service program where they get everything from their, their academic support, um, and enrichment as well as a number of different extracurricular activities throughout the day. Um, so we're excited about to, um, be providing and looking to provide that opportunity this summer. Again, thank you very much for all your support. We wouldn't be able to do this with, without y'all. Um, one of my favorite, this is my personal favorite thing, on the back of the, the MGM Leaps, um, one-pager, you'll see that, you know, for our classroom leaders last summer, we were able to hire, um, all fourteen of them attend universities throughout the state of Alabama, but nine of them are actually, are, were actually, um, graduates of Montgomery Public Schools. So to have them come back, stay here for the summer, serve our community and just, you know, have, one of them is actually a long-term substitute at Garrett Elementary now, who never even thought about going into the, um, teacher profession. So it's a really, really wonderful impact on not just our children, but, but the adults and our young adults who are going to be, you know, all of them are going to be our future. So, does anyone have any questions? We were, we, we received funding from y'all to help support the implementation of these programs last year. So we're just circling back to just report out on impact, um, and outcomes and, and also just talk about, again, the planned hopes for continuing to serve our students and what that might look like and, and our adults.
And we've been working with James, with Mr. Williams for already, um, conversations to see what numbers and how far we can expand. Cause we have the opportunity to really actually deeply, um, reach down into the county and figure it out. So we're co-planning, um, we're gonna come back with what the, what's gonna be available and, and possible.
Well, thank you for what you all do when I was in elementary school. They have a campaign that's reading is fundamental, we still, you know. We appreciate that. Uh, it's all kind of money floating around to, uh, narrow the, the deficit of the learning gap that, uh, came, but was already existed made wider by, by the pandemic. So, uh, you know, I don't see where that would be an issue. The school board, does the school board participate with y'all in any way?
Not at this time with youth facilities, but that's, that's, um, our partnership.
Thank you.
First item to consider is a lease agreement for a mailing system to Quadrant Inc. Uh, that's the mailing machine for our mail services. It's on state contract. Can we put that on the next agenda? Consider amendment number two to a contract with Eagle Cleaning Service to extend the contract for one year and add the youth facility to that contract. In the original bid, there was a provision that additional facilities could be added at a set cents per square foot and we would like to exercise that, that opportunity.
I didn't see that, uh, I, I, I saw the old contract, but I didn't see the youth facility added and how much that was gonna add to the contract. Is there a reason why we didn't, we didn't have those figures?
It, hold on. To add the youth facility is a monthly cost of one thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars.
One thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars for a month?
Correct.
I didn't see it. It's on there?
It's in the, um, amendment that's attached. Thank you. Um, consider a memorandum of understanding with the City of Montgomery for the purpose of funding the Montgomery Smooth Jazz Festival. They were able to get us that MOU late last week and we wanted you to have the opportunity to review it.
I want, I want Tommy to look at that, uh, to make sure that, that, there's no talk in there about liability. And, uh, the other thing is, um, there's no talk in, uh, in there about, there're gonna be some proceeds, uh, cause they're gonna charge to get in there. And we didn't, we didn't, there's no, no talk in there about what, what's to happen to the proceeds, the direct proceeds. I know there, that there, there are advantages and things that, that, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna receive benefits from the, the hotels and that kind of thing. But there's actually gonna be, uh, cash proceeds. So I'd like to see something in there about the proceeds. I'd like to see something in there about liability. And, uh, percentages are there, but, uh, we, we, we have set dollar amounts. We got the three hundred thousand dollars in there and I'd like the, the sixty-four to be set out in dollars as well.
Rachel, I asked her, uh, when she was here, if, if the event loses money, who's responsible for covering that? She said the city was. Now, I didn't ask her about the liability and everything else. But she did say that they would cover the losses. So I'm sure they're gonna collect the revenue, the proceeds too, if they did it that.
Well, we'll see what they say. I, I, I know they're gonna provide police protection.
And I hope it's success.
They're, they're, oh, yeah, but, but, but they're, they're gonna, when I said liability, I'm talking about people getting hurt.
Yeah, but I think, but you're also talking about the cash.
The cash part, yeah.
They make the proceeds from the event if they make money.
I mean, I, 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 I don't have a problem with theirs being a lion's share, because they're gonna provide the facility. They're gonna provide the police protection. They're gonna provide a lot of the people.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with it. I just want us to, to at least, you know, have it addressed.
Yeah, exactly. I don't have a problem with them, you know, keeping the proceeds as long as they have all the liabilities and attached to that, and we just do a sponsorship.
It's terrible. It's, 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 I'm thinking, though, they're nonprofit, and I think they, they make grants, and I want to see, you know, get some kind of understanding what, what they plan to do with what the money they make. I mean, they're talking about making, what, three, three, four million? That's what they're talking about making.
I hope they do. You know, I do believe that because we lost money, so I hope we do. That'd be great.
We'll consider an alcohol license application for our special events for Latino Festival on February 26th. Can that go on the next agenda? We have a bid award to asphalt contractors for various county road projects for engineering.
I got one question. George, on the, was Georgia? There was three projects, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to combine all three together under one agreement? In other words, I know asphalt contractors was the low bid on two of them. Wiregrass was the low bid on one of them, but we're gonna give the entire contract to asphalt? Because when you add them all together, they're the lowest. My question is, can you not split them up?
The only, the reason we set it up like that, we have to keep the funding separate, like the rebuild Alabama funds, the federal, federal exchange fund, and the county fund. Plus, combining them all together, you get a lot better price on the asphalt, because it's a bigger job.
So they all knew going into it, they'd be all combined together?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Even though they had bid each project out separately?
Yes, sir. It's set up in the plans, and that's the only reason they were broken out, is to keep track of the funding. Because, you know, we have to report that to the legislature, HCCA.
So in the bid, there was three altogether?
Yes, sir.
All or none, basically, on the bid?
That's right, yes.
That's what, that was my question, because I know one of them was a little bit cheaper than the others.
Oh, okay.
And this dollar amount is just for three projects? That's, that's all we're talking about?
Uh, nice, actually. Fifty-eight miles of road, and they're all over the county, and it's. Oh, okay. Yeah, we worked on this thing over a year, and I think we got an excellent price, $72 a ton.
Are we still behind on striping? Is, is that the holdup on, because a lot of our roads have been, but no striping. Is that, the striping companies, I know they got.
The striping company in state Alabama and our area is way behind. Most all of our projects have been striped. I only have one road, Maryweather Road.
That was the one I was referring to.
And that's the only one that's left. It's, it's far behind. The Aldox given them ninety days, extra days to get the striping done. We have to abide by their rules because it's a little, little late project.
Okay. No problem with next agenda, then?
That's all our future agenda items.
Did we talk about the funding on the, down that side, or we talked about, are we gonna talk about that today? Number 11, 12, 13, those, 14, 15, those have been hanging out there for a while, some of them have? And we've been waiting on the funding to come in? Do we want to talk about those today?
Well, we can't, that, that funding hasn't been departed yet.
So, okay, we'll wait on that.
You know, I, 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 I'm really at a loss with this Cloedale Playhouse. I mean, I, I, I've, I've supported them since I've been in office. This time they want to come to the commission, so, yeah, let them do it. If you'll see, you'll see where they've been getting their support from. Number 13?
Yeah. So they want to come present to us?
Well, I mean, obviously, they came to you, right?
No, no, I, I was just reading one. I don't think.
They had, they had sent a letter, and I don't know who all it was sent to, so we were just gathering up all the requests.
Yeah, well, you know, usually, usually, I mean, I usually sponsor Playda every year, but I don't know what they, like I said, I don't know. Let's see.
I think there's been a change in staffing.
They, they changed quite a bit over there.
Well, we did get some from Blue Gray Tennis a while back, and Allen Kidney Foundation sent a letter. I remember seeing that letter. Dream Court has sent a letter. The Montgomery Ballet, I can't recall if I got a letter from them or not.
I think he came last fall.
Yeah.
Well, we usually support the ballet.
I think we told him we'd help him or something. I can't remember.
$5,000. We usually support the ballet, and we usually support the Kidney Foundation, and we usually support, do we support the Dream Court?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, could we, on these funding requests here, maybe, let me get with Florence and, and get a more definite number of what they're asking, what we feel like we can do, and have it on the next agenda for the next meeting?
It'll be fine with all, everything you got, and you can just about do it.
Yeah.
Unless, for some reason.
It doesn't.
Yeah, some of them have been joint, some have been budget change in the House appropriation. Some have been, Cloedale Playhouse has been by Commissioner Harris. Dream Court's been by, some of them are split up, and, and some have been joined again, so. I guess my question, is there any, let's find out exactly what each one's asking for, and then we can make a decision next meeting, if that's okay.
That's fine, but then too, you need to think about whether you're gonna keep on doing what you've been doing in the past.
Yeah.
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 Are we gonna keep doing the same?
Keep on doing the same thing, because they repeatedly come here, that mean they think they're in the budget.
You're right.
Exactly. Exactly right.
Yeah, but I mean, I was supporting Cloedale out of my.
You were, you were.
Out of my discretionary funds.
Yeah, Cloedale Playhouse is open to everybody in the county, so it's not just, it's in your district, but it's open to everybody.
You know, but I, but I had been doing that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. You all can work on that, the.
Give it a time, let's do that.
What we got?
What else?
Time started.
We supposed to start at 10:00 today, wasn't we?
Yep.
Y'all changing, y'all.
We need to leave, leave, leave the time alone. Stop changing the time.
I think y'all read approved the committee.
We need to stop changing. Stop changing the time.
We will.
One of these.
It's set.
Do we need to move directly into the formal session, or we want a break, or how you want to do?
We, the ladies up there need about five minutes to swap over, if that's okay.
This old man needs five minutes, too. I sense that.